Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens, so help us, God.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman McCarthy.
President.
Alderman Wiltshire. Alderwoman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Laws.
Here.
Alderman O'Brien.
President.
Alderman Tenza.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Dowd.
President.
Alderman Cleese.
Here.
Alderman Lopez. Alderman Gidge.
Here.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderwoman Melizegoya.
Present.
Alderman Harriet Gathwright.
Present.
We have a call, Mr. President.
Alderman Wiltshire informed me this afternoon that you had been able to attend to a family emergency. Also President, Mayor James Donatius, Corporation Counsel, Stephen Bolton. Communications?
Communications, received by Brian S. McCarthy regarding special board of Alderman meeting.
If there are no objections, the communication will be accepted and placed on file. This evening's agenda is a presentation on assessment updates, so, Mayor Donatius?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you all for coming. Before we begin, let me introduce some of the people that you're not used to seeing. From KRT, we have Ken Rogers, President, and Bob Tosier, Vice President, and they will be speaking to you in a little, a few minutes. John Doom-Hamelback here is the City Chief Assessor. Of course, you know John Griffin, who is the CFO. These are some of the people that have been involved in analyzing the situation that I will give you the overview. So, I'm going to kind of explain the overall situation, where I think we are, and then KRT will undertake to explain more of the details regarding the proposed or the required reevaluation. So, let's begin with the legal requirements. Now, under the, and Steve Bolton has been involved with this, the city attorney, over this entire time, so he can, of course, answer any legal questions. But, under the Constitution of the State of New Hampshire, and you see the provision of the Constitution on the slide, and pursuant to a statute that backs it up, passed by the legislature, every community in New Hampshire is required to reassess all property in the city every five years. Nashua lasted a reevaluation in 2012, excuse, 2013, so 2018 is our year. Sort of, as we began to approach this, we began to communicate with the DRA, the Department of Revenue Administration, which is in, which is in charge of all of the property taxation in the state of New Hampshire, in charge of the entire assessment and evaluation process. And, we wanted to communicate to them, for the reasons that I'm going to explain, and we began with the idea that we would like to take some additional time beyond 2018 to complete an evaluate, to complete an assessment. Because, I think, and correct Ken, and everybody can correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm incorrect at all, but in general, there are kind of three approaches we could take. We could simply kind of do a statistical upgrade based upon the equalization ratios that we have, and I will explain what those are. A very minimal, just kind of up, up the valuations. Number two, we can take a more middle course to engage experts and take a very thorough look at a statistical upgrade, where individual classes of property are examined and all sales are reviewed, and a much more thorough job is done. Or, number three, we could do what's called a full measure and list, which is to engage a firm like KRT, not only to kind of look at all of the sales on paper and proceed with the process that will be described to you, but physically inspect all the properties in the city. Now, the last time we had a full measure and list in Nashua was in 1991, and it was implemented in 1992, under very adverse circumstances, because at that time, in 1990, there had been a very serious, severe recession, real estate recession, depression, really. Public service went bankrupt, almost all the banks in Nashua either went under or were taken over, and we saw, you know, huge declines in property values, particularly in condos and in commercial values, just before the reevaluation took place. In any event, what we did was, as a result of some of the impacts we think the reevaluation could have, we approached the DRA and we asked whether we could have additional time in order to do a full measure and list, for the first time in 27 years, to physically inspect all the properties in Nashua. And we think still that if we want to capture all the value we have, particularly in the commercial properties, that that would be the best way to proceed. However, they, first, I think, KRT talked with them, in general, then we met with them, and what they told us is absolutely not. That if we, they don't, you know, they're not that interested in, what they want is this thing to be done this year pursuant to, as they call it, statutory and constitutional duties. Even if we were suggesting we would do, you know, the most thorough job possible, they're not willing to grant any extensions. And you see on the, on the, you see on the screen in front of you and in your packet, a copy of a letter that they sent us. Now, the letter is less blunt than they were in person, where they basically said, "Look, we'll sue you, you know, next week if you tell us you're not going to do this." They'll go to, they said they would go to the Board and Land and PACS Appeal, seek an order, and then seek an order to, out of the Superior Court, to order the city to proceed. So, based upon that, we engaged further in discussions with KRT, who have a lot of expertise in this area, who are one of the, only one or two entities that can work with the software that we have in the assessment area, and they can explain the details of that. A highly professional firm that we have confidence can, that can do a good job. So, we began to talk to them about how we might, might proceed. And, and I will go further through the slides and kind of explain to you the issues we see, and why we need to proceed in a very thorough and professional manner, and why we think it's very important that we undertake the approach that, since we were being forced to do this, undertake the approach that I am suggesting. The main problem being that residential values, and you'll see some of the specifics, have gone up significantly in the last five years. We think, on average, that residential properties have gone up at least 25 percent in value. Now, the good news there is that, you know, many people, their homes are worth 50,000, 60, 70, 80, even $100,000 more than they were five years ago. The issue that's created for the city and for our residential property owners, our homeowners, is that commercial values may not have gone up as much. In fact, some of the statistics I'll show you suggest definitely not. And therefore, when values are taken from lower levels to 100 percent, it will result in a shift of property taxes from commercial and industrial to residential property owners. But, to kind of understand the way the system works, we have here a, there is the concept of an equalization ratio. Now, this is a pretty technical definition, and you can see it on the screen, that's given by the DRA. But, what it really means is, if in a category of property, let's say, single-family homes, the average home is worth 125 percent, if the average home is assessed at $100,000. But, if that average home is actually worth 125,000, on average, across a broad category of single-family homes, the equalization ratio is .8, or 80 percent, meaning that the assessment is 80 percent, on average, of the actual fair market value. Which means, if you're at 80 percent, that if you go to 100 percent, the assessments will, on average, go up 25 percent. Just a little bit more background, the way that the, the equalization ratio is intended to result in all properties being treated relatively the same, in the sense that if a new house is built today, and it has a value of $250,000 and sells for 250, it will not be put on the rolls at 250. It will be put on the rolls at 80 percent of real value. It'll be put on the rolls at 200, so that it is treated the same as pre-existing houses, which, on average, are an 80 percent of value. All right, so, now, within, within the area of the assessments, the DRA creates many different categories of property. Single-family homes, condos, multifamily dwellings of four units or less, apartment complexes, and then various categories of commercial property. You know, industrial property, shopping mall-type property, so there are a number of different categories. But, to simplify the, the situation, we have, and make it easier to kind of get an overview, we have categorized the properties in Nashua in two basic areas. Residential, meaning, single-family homes, condos, and small apartment buildings, you know, a couple of units. And then, commercial values, which include everything else. Shopping malls, multifamily complexes, industrial buildings, R&amp;D, strip malls, you know, everything else. So, if you look at the next slide, it shows you the approximate value, the approximate assessed value of these two basic categories of property as they currently exist. And if you look to the left, the light blue column, you will see that, right now, on the books, we have residential property valued at about $5.3 billion. And, that is at an equalization ratio, the ER, of about 80 percent. In other words, on average, these residential properties are worth about, are assessed at about 80 percent of real value. Again, on, on the left of this first slide, the dark blue column shows you the commercial and industrial properties, which altogether have a a total assessed value of about $3.2 billion, for a total of about 8.5 billion. Now, the, there are many more categories of property within the commercial and industrial, really, than there are in the residential. I mean, there are, you know, several categories of property in the residential, basically, but in the commercial-industrial, there's a much more wider variety of property. So, it's all sort of grouped, and some of these, these categories may be at kind of different equalization ratios than others. Now, I should have said at the beginning that these equalization ratios are only approximate, because they're based upon sales which have occurred in the last, you know, so-called qualified sales which have occurred in the last year. Now, there are many residential sales that occur, so you've got a much, a very, a significantly larger group of data points to look at. But, in the commercial and industrial area, especially within the subcategories, there might be a handful, or even only one sale. For example, in the area of residential apartment complexes, I think I'm correct in saying, there's only been one significant sale in the last year. And that was not qualified. Now, qualification is another concept that, that is used in determining equalization ratios. For various reasons, the DRA suggests that, that sales can be disqualified between relatives, or if a government entity is involved, or, and there's like 20 different reasons for disqualification. A disqualified sale doesn't necessarily mean that it wouldn't be considered in determining, in a, in a process like we're asking KRT to do. It wouldn't necessarily be disqualified in determining, kind of looking at the market, but at least for the, for the, in the context of the equalization ratio, it is disqualified. So, there are, in terms of the commercial and industrial equalization ratio, we're talking, we're, we're dealing with a relatively small number of sales, with some having been disqualified. So, you know, the actual commercial values, as compared with assessments, might be something different than this, but based upon what we're looking at, we have a 90, on average, across the commercial properties, we have about a 93 percent commercialization ratio. Excuse me, equalization ratio. Meaning, the average commercial property, based upon the qualified sales that have taken place, is about, assessed at about 93 percent of its actual value. Now, if we use those equalization ratios and now move to the right, and we, we upgrade the two categories of properties to 100 percent, the $5.3 billion of property in the residential sphere increases to 6.6 billion, which, the good news being, there's a billion three out, of, of value out there that didn't, that our homeowners possess, that didn't exist five years ago, so people's homes are worth a lot more. But, if we use this 93 percent equalization ratio and take the commercial property to 100 percent, we only come up with $3.4 billion. So, on the left, you can see that the residential property is about 62 percent of the entire value of the city. This is under current assessments, and the commercial property is 37 and change, almost 38 percent of the current values, the total amount of the current values. Were these equalization ratios simply applied to the property that exists? The residential property would go to 66 percent of total value, because it's going up more based on these equalization ratios, where, based on the scant number of sales, the preliminary view, but based upon the 93 percent equalization ratio for commercial, residential would climb to five, 6.6 billion, which would then be 66 percent of the total value. In commercial and industrial, although it would climb in terms of total value, not as much, so it would go down to 34 percent. So, the relative split between residential and commercial would change. So, what does this mean in terms of property taxes collected? So, we're just giving you a hypothetical on the next page, which is six of 14. 200 million is roughly what we collect, we'd collect a little bit more than that, but it is a, you know, a good round number for analysis. Currently, if we're collecting $200 million, based upon the values that we have on the books, as I said, 62.4 percent, or 125 million roughly, is being collected from residential property taxpayers. Whereas, on commercial and industrial, nearly 38, or about 75 million, is being collected from commercial and industrial property taxpayers. Now, from the page before, you remember that we changed, we upgraded the properties based on the equalization ratios, and on that up, that, that upgrade, so to speak, residential went to 66, and commercial went to 34 percent of the entire pie. So, based on those new values, because residential is now 66 percent, not 62, 130, on the same $200 million, 60, 132 million, rather than 125 million, would be collected from residential, and 68 million, rather than 75 million, would be collected from commercial and industrial. So, what does that mean? It would mean a shift of $7 million off commercial and onto, onto residential, based upon the required adjustment in assessments that the state is imposing. So, why do we need to, what do we need to do? We think in reviewing a number of the commercial sales that have taken place, that we may not be capturing all of the commercial values that really exist in the marketplace. We want to, and we need to make sure that we do that, so that we can mitigate the effect of the shift that you see on page six of 14. I think KRT can correct me if I'm wrong, but there are, you know, kind of, three different ways you can evaluate a property. You could, you know, there's the, the, kind of a sales analysis, what, what is a prop, you know, something like that sell for, you know, and, but there might not have been a whole lot of sales, and there might not have been recent. Again, in the commercial area, these sales are, are less frequent. Number two, the cost approach, you know, how much did it cost to build this building, and what's the depreciation, that kind of thing. Or, third, build an income model that, that uses market data and some information we can gather from taxpayers themselves, to determine what is the revenue generated by a commercial property. And then, based upon that revenue and the appropriate capitalization rate, so called, decide how much it is worth based on the income approach. And we think that if we analyze commercial properties in that way, we can come up with more commercial value than we would be able to simply by using this 93 percent equalization ratio and just, you know, bringing properties up according to that number. I mean, I could cite specific properties, but, you know, there are properties that seem to be generating a lot of income that don't have very high assessments, but there haven't been a lot of sales in those categories, and so, it's hard to peg their value with a five-year-old sale, or a two-year-old sale, or something like that. We've seen some commercial, we've seen some apartment complexes sell, you know, considerably higher than their assessments, or at least one big one, which was disqualified for various reasons, but still tells us a lot about the market. In any event, we think that by engaging KRT to take a very detailed approach, to look at all properties, including commercial properties, to develop income models with respect to each category of commercial property, that we can maximize or increase, make sure that we capture all of the commercial values that actually exist out there. And, therefore, mitigate the effect of the shift that could occur from the values that we see in analyzing this data. Now, before I turn it over to them, I'd be glad to take any questions, if you have any for me, I don't know if I can answer them, but I would say that, you know, this, this, what, what could happen here? The shift of $7 million, you know, this could mean that, now, this, this could mean that, you know, someone's taxes could go up 10 percent. And, you know, that's not what we want to see. It's not, it's, this is, you know, we haven't even factored in the budget here. So, we certainly don't want to see that. We're happy that people's houses has gone up in value, we're happy that, you know, a family has $50,000 or $75,000 of equity that they didn't have before, but we certainly don't want to promote or we don't want to, we want to make sure that we're correct and fair. We don't want to unfairly increase residential property taxes at the expense of, you know, while benefiting commercial properties if we don't have to. So, that gives you the, this wonderful picture, yes?
And, just for clarification,
Dowd.
There are some instances, probably not many, but where residential or commercial property values have gone down since the last time we took a look at them, and therefore...
Yeah, we're talking averages. Now, I would bet there's not a single residential property that's gone down, but commercial, definitely. One thing I did not mention, something else, the homes at, that are, that are, have a more moderate value, like those around $200,000, have gone up more in value than those higher up on the value scale. So, we're talking average figures. The equalization ratio of, of, of homes, you know, in the 200,000 to 250 range is lower than 80. Therefore, their values are going to go up more. Houses at the top haven't increased in value as much. So, the impact will be more on the more moderately priced homes. Which is another thing we'd like to avoid. Anyway, any questions now?
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yeah, so, on the last page, it said the median assessment ratio, I'm going to say between .9 and 1.1.
Okay, now, where are we looking, sorry?
The standards for statistical reevaluation. I guess my question is, are we required to do 100 percent? Or is it within that .9 to 1.1?
KRT, that's, now, you've gone into the KRT area of the presentation? I've sort of taken you to the level of my expertise, they're far more knowledgeable than me, so we'll let...
These are the ranges the DRA requires you to meet, when you do the process we're discussing.
So, I guess my question is, why not just go to 90 instead of 100?
Well, I think if you said...
90 is the lowest, right?
I think if you said you were doing that, you'd have DRA problems, I mean...
Well, you probably could do it, but you'd have the same problem you have if you go to 100 percent, right? Every, everything would be raised to 90. The residential would have to go up higher to get to 90 percent, or have to go up by a greater amount, on average, than the commercials. In fact, the commercials might have to go down to get to 90.
Yeah, that's right, if we're at 93, to take it to 90, you take the commercial values down, not up.
But, the end result of that will be just the tax rate is higher, and the tax bills are identical to what they would have been at 100 percent.
Any other?
Yes, at least twice during your presentation, Mayor Donatius, you referenced a sale that was disqualified. Can you identify what that sale was, just so we have a sense of what it was that is not figured in here?
Do you think we can talk about that?
Was it a public sale?
Yeah.
And it was publicly disqualified? I mean, I would assume that's public information.
There's some informa, there's some, there's some, some of these sales, well, the one I was specifically referring to are the Kessler Farm Apartments, which sold, it was, it's technically like five different parcels, but it sold all at once... like five different parcels, but it sold all at one, all at one, and it sold for sixty-five million dollars against a thirty-six million dollar assessment. Now, that was disqualified because it was a multi-parcel sale, but if you ask KRT about a sale such as, and there, there are no, there have been no other sales recently like that in Nashua. So what does that mean? Now, if you ask KRT, which, which I have, you know, the market for a con, for a, a property such as that, you know, very few of those in Nashua, only one is sold, might be all of New England, or all of northern New England. So that sales that take place in Maine of similar-sized and configured properties might reflect market value here, because the, the people who trade in projects such as that, you know, they're not saying, they're investing in apartments in kind of this area of the country. They're not saying, oh, we have to buy in this town. They're looking for, to invest money in real estate, you know, multifamily, large complexes in this, you know, somewhere...
Regionally.
Regionally, exactly. Some of the sales downtown, you know, there's some sales downtown that suggest that residential buildings are also, you know, selling for considerably more than appraisals. Now, we're still within the residential realm, although these are residential buildings classified within the commercial and industrial segment, because they're not obviously single-family homes or condos or anything like that.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the last time, the full measuring list was done in nineteen ninety-one, nineteen ninety-two. If I remember correctly, that was, you were mayor at, at that time as well?
It was implemented after I left office.
Okay. So what, what has been the method that the city has used since then? And has it had an effect on the, on what the assessed values are today? I mean, is it, have they been...
Well, I haven't involved, but I think just the, you know, kind of a, an in-house statistical update. But I don't think people were facing this situation where we've seen a rapid escalation of residential values. Now, one thing I should have mentioned, I mean, we're not alone here. I mean, Portsmouth has been going through the same thing. So Portsmouth did a reevaluation in two thousand fifteen. They did one in two thousand and ten. They did one in two thousand and fifteen. And for whatever reason, I, I don't think we would do this, but residential values went up so rapidly between two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and seventeen. Even though they were still three years away from a required reevaluation, they did a second, they did another one, and two years later, in two thousand and seventeen. Because residential values had already climbed so much in those two years, they wanted to do it again, which they did. In each case, it shifted property taxes onto residential property owners. And you, you know, you know what the Portsmouth market is like. It's rapidly escalated. I mean, I don't think ours has gone up quite as much as that, but it's kind of the same, you know, a similar situation.
Alderman, please.
Thank you. I hate to ask this question, but will this have an effect on the, the TIF going forward with anything like that?
No, I mean, I think that, I would say no, but we could talk about that in the context of the TIF. All right. Why don't we turn it over to KRT to introduce themselves and, you know, talk through more of the details of what, what would take place?
Good evening. My name's Ken Rogers. I'm the president of KRT. And with me tonight is Rob Tozier, the vice president. We're the principal owners of the company. We have a combined forty-five years of appraisal experience. We run over a hundred and fifty projects. And we've done communities from a thousand parcels up to thirty-eight thousand parcels. What we'd like to talk about first would be the standards of a statistical revaluation. The purpose of a statistical revaluation is to maintain assessment equity between the different classes of property. Like every other community in the state of New Hampshire, we use an April first date of assessment. And we're looking at the sales between April first, well, for, an assessment date of April first of two thousand and eighteen. We'll be analyzing sales from April first of two thousand and seventeen to March thirty-first of two thousand and eighteen. We have to have a median assessment ratio between ninety percent and a hundred and ten percent. Coefficient of dispersion must be less than twenty, which we'll talk about that in a few minutes. And the price-related differential must be between ninety-eight and one oh three. As the mayor stated, we use three approaches to value. We use the market approach, which is looking at sales. We use the cost approach, which will look at the cost to build, look at depreciation, and look at land sales and what we call land residuals. We look at the income approach, so we'll get rents back, expenses, and vacancy rates. We'll analyze those to develop a net operating income, and we'll capitalize that to develop a valuation for the property. It's typically commercial and industrial properties and apartments over five units. So the mayor talked a little bit about this. The assessment ratio is just the relationship between the assessed value and the market value of a property. An example would be if you had an assessment of two hundred thousand and it sold for two hundred and fifty thousand, the assessment ratio would be eighty percent. So it would be at eighty percent of market value. The statistic that we use most often is the median ratio, which is the middle of a data set. So we'll look at all the sales, or array them from low ratio to high ratio, and we're looking for where the middle ratio lies. The coefficient of dispersion, probably the easiest way to explain this is if you have your assessment ratio or your median at a hundred percent, and you think of it as a bullseye, it's how close those other ratios are to that center. So the tighter, the better appraisal model that we've developed, and it predicts value The price-related differential, what that does is basically test low-value properties versus high-value properties, and our, is the relationship the same or different? So on a statistical revaluation, the process would be, we begin in late March with a start of meeting with the city and the Department of Revenue Administration. We would start by measuring and listing all the residential sales from four-one of seventeen to three-thirty-one of eighteen. And on the commercials, we'll look at a two-year data set. And the reason is, those sales are what's going, we're going to develop our model based on those sales, so we want the most accurate information. We'll analyze all the sales through various ratio studies. We'll look at where the deficiencies are, and we'll update all the tables as are indicated from the sales analysis. We'll analyze the income and expense statements returned by commercial, industrial, and apartment owners, and create income tables. Once the va, the initial values are set, we'll review all properties in the city. So just a parcel-by-parcel review of every parcel in the city. Once we're finished with that, we'll publicly post the values to notify the property owners of the new assessments. We'll conduct taxpayer hearings, so they can come in and ask us questions about their property, or maybe just an overall. And when we're completed with that, we deliver a U.S.P.A., which is Uniform Standards of Professional Appraisal Practice Manual, to the city and to the Department of Revenue. So the goals of a revaluation, it corrects disproportionate taxation by valuing all property at its fair market value as of April first of two thousand and eighteen. It adjusts value for market shifts. It ensures that various classes of property are valued at the same level of assessment. And with that, it creates uniformity and assessment equity. We create a mass appraisal model, basically using a systematic approach, which gives And with that, I'll turn it back over to the mayor.
Okay. Well, does anybody have any questions for KRT at this point? Alderman McCarthy.
So would you actually complete the appraisal by April first, or what's the timing of the project?
No, I think the end date is October.
October first. That's just the data value, so it'll be an assessment, or value as of April first.
So you would get it to us when we submit the forms for the tax rate setting for fiscal nineteen?
So using the income approach for commercial properties, is that different than what we're doing now, or what we've done in the past?
I ha, yes. I don't think they've ever analyzed the income. And in a city as large as Nashville, that's pretty, but that's, if a person is going to purchase a property, they're going to want to look at the income stream of that property. And that's really the driving force of, you know, why they would consider it. So right now, I think the only approach they're using is the cost approach.
Alderman, Jenny.
And for sales, you say you use sales that will, will have occurred between April first two thousand and seventeen and March thirty-first of two thousand and eighteen. Why is it limited to just one year? Why don't you look at sales that occurred prior to that year?
We, we can look at them. The Department of Revenue pretty much has the guidelines of what sales we're, we need to use. But we will, if we don't have sales in certain classes, go back a couple of years, and maybe we have to do a time adjustment on them to bring them up to current market. But for the DRA's analysis, that's their period of time.
And typically in a city, you'll have, you know, far more sales to use. So one year would be sufficient to get enough data points to create a valid model for valuation. So when you have, we could have a thousand sales to analyze, which is a very large sample to use in just one year.
Alderman, Jenny.
So if, if I bought my house in two thousand for a certain price, and, and I still own it, it hasn't, there hasn't been a sale, I mean, how, how do you value my house if it's beyond that one-year period, sales period?
The year sales period is dictating what the market is at this point in time. So we're going to bring your property up or down, depending on the, the situation, to market value as of April first. So the two thousand's sale probably doesn't mean very much to us.
I guess it, it would seem to me that if you're looking at sales of residential houses in an area like Nashville that has a huge stock, a sale from last year of a house with similar square footage, same number of bedrooms, same utilities, similar neighborhood, is more of an accurate predictor of market value in two thousand and eighteen than a sale from two thousand of that exact property.
Correct, of course, yes. Yeah, like if you were to get a bank appraisal to refinance, that appraiser's going to just look back a few months. They won't even go back a full year. So when we're building a, a computer model for mass appraisal, we're going back an entire year to get the largest sample set possible.
Alderman, done? Were you done, Alderman Jenny?
If I could...
Yeah.
So, so when you're looking at a house, you're not looking at what, necessarily what that house may have sold for at any point in time. You're looking at what similar houses sold for within the last year, ideally, to, to determine the value.
Correct.
But if you want to put yours on the market for what it sold for in two thousand, I'll talk.
Things like that.
I didn't know you were looking.
I wasn't, indeed.
Till he could get that price.
Alderman, done?
Yeah, actually, that's the way real does price homes for sale right now. They look at comparables that have sold within the last short period of time. But my, my other question is, is, if, from an income perspective relative to industrial properties, if it's a very large company with multiple buildings in the city, and even surrounding cities, and the income that's generated was probably spread over several of those buildings, how would you make any kind of estimate as to the income generated by an industrial building like that?
Well, we're looking at if that building was to be rented out. So we're looking at just market rents. So it doesn't matter, as far as who the tenant currently is, it's, you know, if I was to own that building and rent it out to somebody, what would I rent it for?
Yeah, I'm talking about manufacturing companies, engineering companies.
Do you have a specific example in mind, Alderman?
Without stating it, yes. And it, it, it's not something that, you know, too many people would be able to rent if they were...
It's probably a, kind of a specific question that I'd have to see the property and make a determination.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm looking at page twelve, and one of the things is conducting formal hearings when you, after you're done with your evaluation. Can you touch base and just expand on that? What the average taxpayer, if he's in conflict with what you came up with, with the evaluation, could you just go over so that the public can know what the process is? What is the hearing type of about? And so that they can understand what we're trying to do here, please?
Sure, they can come in, we'll go through their property record card to make sure that there's no discrepancies with the data. We can explain how the value has arrived. If they have comparable sales, or what they feel are comparable, they can bring those in and show them to us. Or comparable assessments, you know, if their neighbors, they have very similar houses and their values are very different, you know, it's those things that we can look at. We do put together, too, a taxpayer, it's a little, like mini-manual, and it explains the whole process and how we develop the values, you know, the neighbor, how the neighborhoods were delineated. It gets into pretty good detail.
One other thing, there have been instances on, on trying to equate home values. If, if you're looking at a particular type of house in a development, and they all look alike, to give them all the same valuation would be wrong, because some of them may have a finished basement, or other amenities that are all on the inside that make the value of the house higher. So does that normally cause conflict, or do you have ways around that?
Well, we're using the existing... Well, we're using the existing city's data as far as the interior information. So if there is a finished basement, and it's on the property record card, it will get valued. And that's probably the biggest difference of doing a full revaluation where we're inspecting every property, versus doing a statistical where we're really just looking at sales, and then using the existing data.
And that's one reason why we had requested the DRA that we, you know, be allowed to do, take more time and do the physical inspection, because if there's somebody who's done work without a permit or something, you know, we don't know that, and that's not reflected in the property description, and therefore not reflected in the value. But DRA doesn't care, you know, they want us to do this now, they don't want to wait to get a more complete job. And they're willing to go to litigation to try to force, to force us to do this immediately.
Alderman Jettie.
So if doing this complete reevaluation, I forget what it's, what you called it.
So statistical, we're doing a statistical revaluation, but there's a full revaluation, which is measuring and listing every property.
Okay, so if measuring and listing every property is a, is a better way of determining what the value of property is, and what we're really looking at is how do properties compare in value to each other, so that as the tax, as the money we raise for taxes is spread among all of these properties, it's done fairly? If that's the better way of doing it, even though the law requires that we complete this by 2018, and, and this type of valuation of, of study would require more time, why can't we meet our statutory obligation, but, but start the process to do the complete reevaluation if that's what we should be doing? Then, then we will have met the, the next five-year requirement, and we will have done it properly.
Well, I can let KRT answer. Well, first of all, it costs a lot more money, like a million and a half dollars, instead of, something like that, instead of a half a million. But even if we, let's say we completed this now, and then next year we did the full measure and list, they'd still want it to be done again. I mean, then they'd want another one in four more years. I mean, maybe in five years, it'd be worth doing the full measure and list, prepare a couple of years in advance, and, you know, go for it then. But, you know, we tried to persuade them to look, you know, it'd be better if we take another year or two and do the full measure and list. And we, you know, we have a complete inspection of everything, but they, you know, they don't want to listen to that. So we kind of suggested, well, we, you know, we're not going to spend a half a million this year and another million and a half next year to do it again. So I think the decision would then be, you know, the next time we're required to do this, you know, maybe we would want to do the more expensive, more time, time-intensive approach. Is that kind of, does that square with what you think?
Exactly, yeah.
My experience with it over the time I've been on the board is that our, as far as I can see, our property cards are actually fairly accurate. So what we do is spend a large amount of money to get a new set of data, most of which we already have. What's, what's more important is to figure out the statistical relationships between the property classes, for which you still have to do the, the kind of analysis that KRT is talking about.
Now, GIS, Angelo Marino, formerly the Assessor, now GIS, the map, map function, is very creative about taking overhead photographs and trying to locate property that has been expanded without knowledge of the building department, and has, on a number of occasions, located property that's been expanded, and then that assessment has been changed. So, you know, there may not be that much extra out there that we don't know about.
But, but, you know, thinking especially of commercial buildings, what, what changes have been done inside the building? We have no way of knowing about that unless they applied for a building permit and.
If you know of any who haven't, let me know.
Most commercial owners, I mean, they do it right. You know, somebody who owns a, you know, a hundred thousand square foot building is not generally doing internal, internal changes without building permits and inspections and everything. I mean, it's usually the mom and pop kind of, put in an extra apartment kind of thing where that happens. I mean, it's not, you know, at Gateway Hills, they're not building without permits, you know, that, that's just one example. Strip mall, you know, they're getting permits. So most commercial owners are consistent with the law.
Alderman Jettie.
And, so doing the income approach on commercial property, do, do, do you have, how do you, how do you obtain the information that you're going to be basing this on? Are the owners compelled by law to provide that to you?
Unfortunately, they're not. We, we sent out income and expense requests, and we do get a pretty decent return. We're probably not going to get all of them, but we can fill in the holes. But I think New Hampshire's one of the only states in New England that doesn't require it to be sent back.
There were also models, or I should say, there's data available commercially, manuals that you can look up, you know, what, what things are renting for, what is the cost of maintenance per acre, those sorts of things. Because what they're doing is they're not actually doing an individual appraisal on every piece of commercial property. They build a model, and then say, okay, for manufacturing-type buildings, the model is so much per square foot, and that takes into consideration the income approach that they've modeled based upon the sales they've looked at, and based upon the information they've gotten from those who respond to the questionnaires, or from other sources. Is that correct?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, reading ahead to your summary slide, and I see that the cost of this project's approximately half a million dollars, and the source will be SURF. Does, we have provisions in the SURF account? Do you do it for this type of activity?
Several years ago, I believe 1983, the Board of Aldermen approved the use of SURF for this purpose. When you ask, is there any specific line item in SURF right now for this purpose? No. But there's 1.7 million dollar, I'd say unrestricted balance that we could use for this purpose.
Just for the new members, can you explain what SURF is normally used for?
SURF is called, is referred, SURF, C-E-R-F, is the Capital Equipment Reserve Fund. It's, it's generally used to fund vehicles for the different departments within the city.
Any other questions? Alderman, Alderman Ziegler.
Yes, thank you. I just have a follow-up question to Alderman O'Brien's earlier question regarding information taxpayers can get. Mr. Rogers, you indicated that there will be like a taxpayer mini-manual that will be developed. So I guess to Mayor Donches, Mr. Griffin, will that then be made available electronically, online? Okay, and if people don't have access electronically, how will that be made available? Have we thought that far out, or any thoughts about?
We haven't thought that far out, but we do know that the more, the more and better information that we can get out to the public, the better we're going to be.
Okay, so I would anticipate it would, like copies of it would be at the library, the senior center, other places, the bus stations, other places people might go looking for information here at City Hall.
I, I arrived in 2010. Just to put this whole thing in perspective, we, we lost a billion dollars in value as a city in 2008, and we lost another half a billion in 2013. The results of '08 were that 75% of the residential taxpayers got a tax bill reduction the following year, and then 66% got a reduction in '13. So this is certainly a market correction, but it's going the other way, as Mayor Donches has indicated, so the more information we can get out, the better. I think the good news here is that the property values are more, that they're real, because sales are taking place, and there's very little vacancy in the apartments. So the vacancy in the apartments being low, coupled with the rent increases, give us optimism that that strata that includes the five-plus apartments would, we could probably capture value there. So that's, I think, important to know, that folks who owned their home back, you know, like Alderman Jettie, he saw a reduction, or maybe a modest increase, and then now the likelihood is an increase, so. But it's all, it's a balancing act, and within the strata, within the single-family residential, which we have 15,600, they're categorized ranch, gambrel, colonial, by neighborhood. There's all kinds of, I think they call tables, and here, there's all kinds of tables that you have to, that, that's what creates the value at the end.
Yeah, I, if I may, I just, I just think it's important that if we're putting information out there to educate taxpayers, we remember that not everyone is going to access it online, and we think about where else we have that information available, so people know and understand what we're doing. Thank you.
Alderman, please.
Follow-up to the Alderman's question. When you're, you said you're going to be mailing out the, the new assessment or the information to them, and they could set up a hearing and so on. At that time, how large is this taxpayer manual going to be? Would it be better to send it with it, so that they can see?
Yeah, it's a few dozen pages, if not larger, so it'd be tricky to send out, you know, 15,000 of those, you know.
Alderman Dowd.
Sort of a related, unrelated. We're getting towards the budget season again, and we're going to be having a discussion of the SURF. And typically, we get into the budget discussions, and we talk SURF, and this year especially with a lot of new members who don't know anything about SURF. Could we have, in the near term, a overview of the SURF account, and how we're intending to look at it going forward? Because the SURF account looks at vehicles over a number of years, and that's very difficult to look at for that one night that we have on the budget, to look at that SURF account. And I think if we have a prelude to that, it would make it a lot easier for the new people to understand.
Yes, definitely, we can arrange that.
Alderman Jettie.
Just to, to reassure property owners out there, the, the fact that someone's house may have increased in value doesn't necessarily mean that their taxes would go up as a result of that. Am I not correct about that? It's the.
That's generally correct. I mean, every, because everybody's have gone up in value, so this is a relative, you know, the, the difficulty that we, that I tried to explain at the beginning is, again, that in, in general, at least these preliminary equalization ratios based upon a smaller number of sales suggests that commercial will not go up as much as residential, and therefore there will be some impact. But in other words, translate, oh, my house is up 25%, therefore my taxes are going to go up 25%. That is not the case, because everybody's property's going up as well. So if every, if all properties went up the same amount, there would be no change in, in the distribution of the tax burden.
I, I think it's, I think we can say is, if your property has not appreciated in value more than the commercial properties, your taxes will actually go down, because their taxes are going to go down. If the number somewhere just above that, that's the break-even point. If your property values have gone up approximately the same as the other residential properties, then taxes will go up because of the way the equalization works.
But again, by doing, by working with KRT, by trying to capture all commercial values, we hope to mitigate the shift from residential to commercial as a result of the rapid escalation of residential house, home values.
Other questions? Well, thank you very much.
So we will be bringing a contract to finance at some point in the very near future. SURF money is already appropriated, so we'll come to finance with the, with the contract. Next meeting being 21st of March. Or no, not the 21st. We're going to go to the, we're going to go to, we're going to go to finance on the 21st.
Alderman Jettie.
I'm sorry, I didn't think of this before, but, so have, are there other companies that do the same type of work, and have we, have we sought bids from other companies?
On the commercial industrial side, we had some discussions with an individual that specializes in commercial industrial. He, he was just overloaded, he could not, he could not perform the work. With regard to, and the mayor alluded to this, we use a Patriot AssessPro system. It's used by five communities in the state of New Hampshire, so we're limited on the amount of folks that know the Patriot system, and that's KRT. The, most of the cities and towns use Vision software. There's really only, there's probably many more, but as far as my knowledge is, there's two major camera systems to, to collect the data. So we're limited to, to these folks. The, the, one final point, Mayor, which is important, the, the, the company that creates the software, AssessPro software, is not certified to perform mass appraisal work in New Hampshire. They're predominantly Massachusetts, Connecticut.
So we really had only two people, two entities that could do it, and the gentleman who did work with Portsmouth, we asked him, is he available? And his answer is not, no, basically, he's not available. In talking with the DRA, another benefit, we tried to hold out to them, was that we would convert to this vision to conform more with the rest of the state, and again, you know, do what you want, but you have to have your appraisal done this year. Period.
Alderman Ziegler.
Yes, this is to Alderman Dowd's earlier comment about SURF. Mayor Donches and Mr. Griffin just indicated the money's already been appropriated, and the contract is coming to finance. So you're looking for a vote to move forward with the, the five million out of the SURF funding. Do you have any ideas to when you might be able to do something so people on finance understand what SURF is, and, you know, what this means for the SURF budget, so they have a sense of the bigger picture? Because obviously, it's, it's not going to happen, this is happening before budget and an explanation of SURF, as requested by Alderman Dowd.
The, the forecast for the number of items at the Finance Committee on the 21st is, is modest. What we could do is, I could explain, I could basically take that opportunity at the Finance Committee as a workshop, or, or some type of better explanation for everybody, so they know the beginning balance of SURF, the expectations going forward. SURF is a multi-year plan that includes every vehicle in the city that the city purchases, whether it's grants or other funds. So we could, we, we could, we could explain that. What would happen in the budget is Mr. Fredette and I would, with the mayor, we would explain how much we recommend putting in the budget for SURF. Money goes in, it's appropriated, and then used by the approved vehicles. That's really how it's been used in the last few years.
Right, so I, if I may, Alderman McCarthy, I just think it's important that this is not a typical request, and you've.
a typical request, and, and you've indicated this has been done in the past. So, I'm not questioning that. I just think with so many new members, it's important for them to understand what it is they're being asked to vote on and what these funds are, so someone doesn't come up to them and say, why did you support that? And, and they don't know. I think we owe it to the new members on the Finance Committee and on this board to understand what SURF is and, and what this means.
Was this, when you say the money's been appropriated, this was not in the submission to SURF for the current fiscal year, correct?
That's correct.
And as we've discussed, SURF is basically funded pay-as-you-go at the moment, not as an actual reserve fund. So, what was in the budget that we're not getting that was five hundred thousand dollars that went into SURF?
It's a very good question, and it's part of, would be part of the presentation. If you may recall, two years ago, we had excess of appropriations not spent, and we put a pro, subject to check about seven hundred and seventeen thousand dollars of, of funds into SURF to boost that value. But Alderman McCarthy's asking, were there any vehicles attached to that money? And, and no, there hasn't been. So, when I refer it to the one million seven is unrestricted, it hasn't been tied yet, or, or asked the Board of Aldermen to approve these sets of vehicles.
So, we've basically been carrying a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar unexpended fund balance plus the yearly supplement to pay for the yearly expenses.
Correct.
And I, if I may, Alderman McCarthy. And, and that's fine. I just think people need to know, and, you know, if there are vehicles we anticipate purchasing, or if there's anything in the future we think we're going to use this money for, what, what this means. Because we have had discussions in the past about bonding for vehicles and using SURF money, and I, I just think that the new members of the Finance Committee should understand the history of this, including whether or not there was anything in last year's budget. I was just kind of being global in terms of them understanding what this means.
Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, we could also get an overview of, of requests from the various departments for anything that would be coming out of SURF in this year's budget.
I also don't think the Board should overlook the fact that doing this is going to make it a rocky year for the budget. In order to equalize the tax rate and, and not give sticker shock to most of the residents, we're going to have to be fairly conservative about budgeting and offset some of it with the surplus and contribution of fund balance. Any other questions, comments? Is there a motion? Alderman, Melizegolia.
I move to adjourn.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and we're adjourned at eight fifteen.